This is a. This is a web-based meeting. The session is being audio recorded, just like every other PNC meeting. Please be advised that today we are also recording in video. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting, and will keep video on themselves on throughout the meeting. During public hearings, all normal rules, including start stating and spelling your name, apply. Please use the chat feature and raise your hand to speak as you will be then recognized. Members of the public may only speak during an open public hearing. If a member of the public speaks outside of a public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or chair. So with that, we've got a full row call meeting, all in attendance. So the next order of business is reading an approval of minutes of October 14th. I didn't have anything. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make the motion that we approved the minutes of the last meeting.
I will second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any dissent? Motion is approved. So let's move on to number four, public communications. I'd like to hear a motion to move items six B one and six B two to the beginning of the the program here, so we can get those behind us.
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay. All right, so we will hear then six B one application, this is not a public hearing. Application 102 dash 21C Brian Neff LE for John Hoving. 119 Treasure Hill Road map 17 block 32 lot 21, construction of a 30 by 30 detached garage to the Horizon Line Conservation District.
Wes, I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
Okay. So I went over there and and looked. You can you can clearly see where the where the garage will go, but it's some 300 feet from the from the road. And quite frankly, it doesn't really fit in our common scenario of Horizon Line in that if you look at the house, you see the mountain behind it, so there is no horizon line. I'm not sure how this got on the map, but I don't see that this is any different than any other house or garage set far back from the from the road. Does anybody else have the same impression or know of that? Know that location?
I do, Wes. I represented the property a couple of times during different real estate transactions, and I was surprised also that it was in the conservation area of the ridge line. I really, you really can't see much of anything while you're on the property, except for the property.
Right, right. So Brian had described the project, it's a 30 by 30 garage. I think he said it was 22 feet high. Brian, was that to the top of the of the ridge or is that to the mean level?
That's actually to the ridge.
That's right. Yeah, we gave height by the by the mean roof, so it's really not even that high. It's a single story.
True. That's true.
It's off to one side of the house as in a courtyard arrangement. He addressed lighting, which was all down. Of course, we'll have to cut trees in the area. It didn't seem that heavily treed. But I I don't see anything really to talk about on this, because it doesn't really fit the horizon line in my view. Does anyone else have any comment on that?
I would just say, Wes, that if the lights and the tree situation that are generally the two primary topics that we address when something is in the horizon line, that if those are not a problem, I think that's more important to focus on than the actual definition of the horizon line. So.
Well, I think Brian did state that all of the the lights are downward facing.
Right.
Right.
That's correct. The lights are also facing towards the existing house. If you were out there, you know that the garage is located very close to the house. It's actually overlaps part of the existing paved driveway. Very limited tree cutting around the building, just enough to get the building in, basically. Um. So I think it complies in terms of regulations.
So we have some some site plan.
On the plan that's there, is that the edge of the horizon line definition, that purple line?
No, I don't think so. I think that was just the clearing area.
Yeah, I would say the district ends at that line. It looks like it's right on the edge of it. Maybe it was just drawn due to topo that way.
There's a blue kind of a heavy dashed line. It's a disturbance. That's a limit of cutting also in terms of clearing around the garage.
Yeah, I was referring to the purple line that goes by sex to driveway. Closer to the bottom of the page.
Oh, yeah, that's the edge of the Horizon Conservation District line.
So we have some waivers that he presented, and I suppose that would be before we have a motion, the first thing to clear up. Would would somebody like to to state those those waivers? I I get five utility plan, six landscape plan, nine zoning informational table, 10 off-site information, 11 impact analysis, 12 location of stone walls, 13 an application for a special permit. And I think that's the extent, Brian, of the of the waivers.
Yes, that's correct.
So I'll move that we accept the waivers of five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Elevate Annie, don't you?
We could. We have a full commission.
Oh, Adam recused himself.
Oh, he did, and I apologize. So do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carried. Thank you, Brian.
Hey, thanks very much.
All right, so moving on to six B two. Kazi's Kazi's Restaurant. Donna, maybe you can fill me in. I've had meals over at Kazi's for some time now. Was this just an oversight that they never got a use change?
No, 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 no. What the the plan is that Kazi is going to be moving into the eventually vacated liquor store. So the liquor store is actually retail. So we need to do a change of use from retail to restaurant. So that's what this application.
I completely misread this. This is this is not this is not Kazi's was Kazi's is.
Right. It's Kazi asking to change the use of the the JKC Trust property, which is at 24 North Main Street, which is the liquor store.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I was thinking that this was Kazi's. Right.
I I read that wrong also, and I was because the map, I couldn't understand how the map worked, and then I was like, they need to show us more. This doesn't make any sense to me. But now that does.
Yeah. So Adam, you're back in, right?
I am back in.
Okay. And Wes, are you going to keep Anne elevated?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so Bianca is here representing Kazi DiVernardo. And she can explain what the process will be for her and and the parking that's on the site plan. Bianca? She was here. Where she is? All right, I'm gonna un she has to unmute herself.
You should spotlight her too, so she shows up. Otherwise, we won't see her.
If she doesn't have a video, can I can't spot her then.
Oh, yeah, she doesn't have a video. You can't. That's correct.
So I'm trying, I'm asking her to unmute herself. She doesn't have video. She just is on her phone, so she's got to figure out how to unmute herself on the phone. So I guess we can kind of look at. So if you looked at the the proposed change of use, they are going to be going for a seating capacity of 24 seats, and there will be three employees per shift. The hours of operation will be Tuesday through Saturday from 11 to 9. They will need to have a grease trap installed, and then they'll have to work with the with Stan, Kathy, and and Joe to build out the inside of the store. But right now, we need to go ahead and change that use. We do have a signature by Kathleen Moore, who is the representatives for the JKC Trust. And then if you look to see, there are, there is in the a site plan that shows the parking at the back. So this would be behind the liquor store. And there's 19 parking spaces, and that includes a handicap.
Is 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 any of that parking in the rear there shared with with anyone else? Like like villager?
I believe the sign in front of the liquor store says that the the parking in the rear is for the liquor store and also for the villager.
So there's no shared agreements or anything like that that you?
Not that I'm aware of. It's just been a sign that Ira has had out front of the liquor store.
Right. Well, it has plenty of parking and and actually that center area, if it was redone, there'd be even more parking.
Right. So they need one space for every three seats. So they have 24 seats, so they only need eight spaces.
Right.
Plus a couple of spaces, two spaces for every three employees and the maximum. So.
They they also have Main Street. They their store on Main Street.
Right.
Will they have to come back after this, or once it's done here, they don't need to come back to zoning anymore?
They will not have to come back to zoning after this, but they will have to fall, you know, follow through on all of the other requirements.
Right, they'll need Torrenton, and they'll need the sewer commission and all of that.
And fire marshal, and then also working with with Joe for the design of the inside. There are waivers. Yeah, I mean, I guess my main question is can't really change the use until Ira is actually out of there, and I don't know when that's going to happen. So I wish I could get Bianca on here and actually speak, because that's a question that I have at this point in time.
So can we make our approval contingent upon that? Ira's moving out?
Um. If we do that, I mean, if we make a we make we change a use for for that for that building and and Ira moves out, but somebody else comes in. There's no guarantee that right, that Kazi comes in. It's just what's before us. I'm not sure how we change a use on on a on a building that's being used as retail now to to make it a restaurant.
Well, I guess we have to see whether or not they have a lease and what the effective date of the lease is, and then you could bounce it off of that.
I but I had the same question when before us was some application from the Affordable Housing Group that hadn't even yet purchased their property. And I raised this question about whether we whether we could approve it when they weren't even they weren't even under contract to buy the property, and I was told we could. So if we could do that, why can't we do this?
We had to do that one, I think, because they required a approval for their financing.
I understand, but that's not.
There's there's one big difference. When that was before us, there was nobody using the other property for anything else. It wasn't inactive use. It was vacant. This building is actively in use as a retail establishment.
Is there a reason we shouldn't just table it until transaction happens, unless this is going to hold up other approvals they need? I kind of agree with Adam. If you change it mid-flight or put it on a dependent on a business transaction that may or may not happen, it just seems like we're making work for somebody else again at some point.
Donna, do you know if that's the fact that this was part of the the negotiation?
I don't know, and I've got somebody called iPhone who is raising their hand.
If they hit star six, that then they can unmute themselves. If that's.
Bianca, are you iPhone? If so, hit star six. I don't know who it is. And I can see that the hand is raised, but oh, okay. Bianca? She's unmuted.
I don't think that's Bianca. That's his iPhone, because.
Who is Bianca?
Bianca is Kazi's representative, and I renamed her when she first came in. But now there's another one that's here for that just says iPhone, but I don't know who that is. And her hand, the person's hand is raised and they're unmuted, but we cannot hear them.
Well, maybe we should table this, and if they we can talk about it later today, if they can figure out their connection or else do it next.
Well, that's that's not a bad suggestion. Why don't we do that and move on?
Okay.
I'll move. We table it.
Second.
All in favor? Hi? Okay, so we'll we'll table it for this meeting unless and and then we may have to table the next next regular meeting. Okay.
Just a quick question, Wes. Why is it being tabled?
Well, we can't, we can't to Adam's point, and I think he's right, unless we have some more information, we can't really approve a change of use when somebody is using it as retail right now. Because Ira is still is still in there. We don't really know when Ira's moving out. So so I assume that this change of use is immediate. It's not. And we can't really set a date. What's the point?
Is it immediate, though? Can can it be approved as retail and restaurant?
No.
No. Because when I had Backcountry, I also had Annie Bananis in there, so it was retail and restaurant.
I think that was an accessory use.
Well, you had both of it because you were in there. If Ira came to us and said, I want to keep the liquor store, but I want to have cheese and crackers and, you know, with French wine in the front of the store, then we would make the change for him because it's him that's doing that. But because he's going to be vacating the premises, that use that he now currently has will be going away, and the new use will be coming in, but we don't know when that's actually going to happen. So we can't make Ira's store a restaurant if he's not going to be doing that.
So. We're also only tabling this until later in the meeting and giving the representatives for for Kazi to figure out how to be able to talk to us, so we can go on with the rest of the agenda. This is continued to the next meeting until we get to the end of the meeting, and if they still can't speak to us, then maybe that's our decision. But right now, we're just trying to get on with the rest of the agenda.
Because I believe there's some other things to discuss.
So.
Bianca.
Join the meeting.
Oh, here we go.
Now do we have to untable it? Take it back up now. Bianca is on the phone and can talk to us.
I don't think we voted on the motion yet.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, we didn't vote on it. Okay.
So do you want to withdraw your motion?
That's fine.
Is she there or not?
Is she able to speak?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I've got a phone number of seven, three, or 3364, but I think that's Wendy Murphy. And then I've got 9605, which I think is Bianca.
So Bianca, if you're there, hit star six and tell us that you are.
All right, so so we're tabled for later on in the meeting if they can get on. So let's move on to five B one. Application 52 21 and 53 21C Paul Samansky, Arthur Howland Associates for North Main Street LLC, Zero North Main Street, map map three block 15 lot five, proposed conservation development of 13 lots. So we are out of the public hearing. And we are now in deliberations on this project. I'd like to share a couple of personal thoughts before we begin deliberations. First, we are planning and zoning. Planning is distinct from zoning. In fact, many towns have separated the two responsibilities. When we plan, such as creation of this conservation development overlay, we look to the future utilizing documents such as a P O C D for guidance for the betterment of our town. The P O C D is conceptual in nature, as it is meant to be, a planning tool. E O C D and other similar documents, therefore, was not intended to be weaponized against a specific zoning application. Second, zoning is very serious business. In lieu of unlimited property rights, which was the case 50 years ago, zoning is a trade-off and is a balance between owners' unlimited rights and the rights of the community that is affected by the development. Zoning, therefore, is a contract of which owners and buyers rely, and is incumbent on this commission to make judgments on its regulations that are fair, without bias or outside pressure. We must always look to the intent of the regulations as we look to make this judgment. And lastly, if there are any commission members or alternates who have had any conversations of substance regarding this application that was outside of these meetings, they must immediately recuse themselves. Please do not expose this commission by having done so. So with that, I think we should move on to talking about this project. And I think a good place to start might be the summary of compliance that Paul Samansky had had submitted to us. And I wanted to make sure that that everyone understood this this special overlay zone and 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 the mathematics that went into the calculations of of these building lots. This this conservation zone was established by us in unanimously with the consent of the Conservation Commission. And it was an incentive rather than the underlying zone, which is for for single-family homes with driveways that come on to the road. The trade-off is for a planned unit development, but that it must be a minimum of 40 acre, 40% land that is in that is in conservation. Now, there is more than 40% represented here, because not only is there 40% that that goes to this conservation area, but there's also 15% additional by subdivision regulations. And they have also have a corridor along Route 7, which is which is which is open area. It's designated as open area. So I wanted to say that upfront. I think it's important that this commission did did set this up as an incentive for this type of development. A planned unit development has a lot of benefits. has a lot of benefits. It's, it's, it's a single way in. This, we can regulate the architecture. We have, we have far more control of, of what's happening here than the underlying, which would be just homes and subdivisions. This, this could have gone this way. So, so does anybody have any questions on, on, on how they made the calculations to the, to the number of lots that were based on our, on our regulations? Well, we'll go through all the pluses and minuses as we get into the, the motions. But I just wanted to ask that, that question upfront to the commissioners.
My only comment is, I believe it's forty point five percent by the applicant's letter is the open space that they're preserving of the total acreage.
Correct, but the lot calculation was further diminished by fifteen percent, which is, which is a subdivision reg in the, in the underlying.
Wes, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what that means. Are you saying that the, the special permit is they're asking, they're designing something that is sixty-five percent open space?
Well.
I, I, I think you're combining another regulation with this regulation to come up with sixty-five percent?
No, I, I was only commenting on their calculation of lots. And, and it was diminished, the, the lot count was diminished by fifteen percent in addition to the forty. Dawn, is that correct?
I, I, to me, that's mixing apples and oranges. Either you have apple open space.
Right.
Or you don't.
Right.
And we can't control that fifteen percent you're talking about. We can control the open space.
Correct.
Under our regulation as we designed it, and we have, under that regulation as a commission, we can change that number.
I think what Wes is trying to say is because they have changed from a subdivision to the, the single lot development, they, they don't need to abide by the subdivision regulations anymore. I think that's where he, that's where he's going to.
Wes is referring to the lot calculation. So in theory, they could build nineteen lots, but they would build thirteen.
Right.
The open space that's preserved is forty point five percent.
Yeah.
Above the minimum that the regulation contemplates. At the end of the day, it is forty point five percent open space preserved. That will be in the conservation district if it's approved, or the conservation area.
Well, Wes, I think if your question is, you know, have they calculated it properly, I think the answer is yes, under the regs. They've properly calculated the number of homes they can put on the site. I don't think that's the end of the inquiry, but as to that question, I think, yes, they have.
So have you all read this letter by Paul Simansky?
Yep.
Do you have any, any, any comments on it?
I, I have a question. They talk about the corridor that runs along Route Seven as open space. Are there any measurements for that? It doesn't really define it.
Well, it's on the survey map, so it's defined by meets and bounds. I, I believe it's a hundred feet deep. And I don't believe that's included in, in the, in the forty percent open space.
Well, yes, I have a comment about it. I mean, you know, it, it proceeds systematically through the regulations. However, when it comes to the criteria that we're supposed to consider in approving the special permit and the site plan, I don't think they've given adequate consideration to the view shed, which is a criteria both in the site plan application and in the special permit application. Look, it wa, it was my proposal that you've seen embodied in the proposed approval of the application subject to conditions which I proposed, which are that they either eliminate the three most, southernmost houses in the site plan, which block the view to the open space, or move those houses to the back of the property to open the view from Route Seven to the open space. I reviewed carefully the criteria, both in approving the site plan and in approving the special permit. And both of them include criteria relating to specifically scenic views, the unique features which enhance the character environment of the area. And as to the site plan, the arrangement of the buildings on the site and the preservation of natural attributes and major features of the site, including scenic views, both from the site and onto or over the site. I believe that those criteria have not been met by the applicant and that we are entitled to condition approval. We could deny approval, but in my view, it'd be more appropriate to condition approval on, as I've said, either removal of the three houses or moving them to the back of the property so as not to block the view.
So all the criteria that you listed are actually secondary conservation areas, as, as far as the conservation subdivision regs are concerned. In the primary conservation area is twenty-five percent slopes or greater. Those are given more weight than what you listed.
Bianca, join the meeting.
Three of those homes out of the view, you would have to violate one of the primary conservation items in order to gain the second. You know, so that's always an issue that I've had, is that in the name of conservation and being environmentally sound, it, it seems like getting something out of the view takes precedent, even though that's really not a, a proper guiding factor from a planning standpoint. Out of sight, out of mind doesn't mean it's more environmentally correct.
Well, my proposal was that either they eliminate them or they move them to the back. If they move them to the back, if there's a problem with the slope, that's their problem.
But we're not supposed to encourage development that, that would violate a twenty-five percent slope for, for no reason other than moving it out of people's sightline.
Well, I'm not suggesting that they violate the twenty-five percent. If they, if their choice is to move them to the back, they'd have to deal with the slope. That may be economically disadvantageous, but that's their choice, not ours.
I would rather gerrymander the development rate along the Route Seven corridor where it has less impact and push it through a twenty-five percent slope closer to the river. You know, this, the intent of this zone is to set up residential uses in a, in a New England village pattern, which is generally right along the road. We, we have a pretty good example of it in the center of town. So most of the, of the development is, is along the road with larger open space in the back. It's actually the way it is going north on Seven also. I, I have a question. I'm not sure. If, if they changed their application and, and didn't apply for the conservation subdivision, which allows them to group some houses more closely together in exchange for having a forty percent or more open space. If they just did a regular subdivision, they would be allowed to put nineteen houses there. Or they, or a condo or townhouses with nineteen dwellings. I'm not sure that's correct. I'm, I, this is, this is a question. And, but I think it's something that everybody needs to think about, because right now we have an application for, for a special permit for, for thirteen houses with some open space. And if they can't do that, what's their next step? So do they go to say, well, now we can, we'll just have to do a subdivision, a regular subdivision, which they'll be allowed to do?
Does a.
Regulations.
Does a regular subdivision require a special permit and a site plan?
It requires a site plan. I'm not sure if it requires the special permit. The, the regulations are different for a regular subdivision.
My concern is that I believe they could do that, and then the, the things you are listing, Mark, would no longer be applicable in our evaluation of the application.
If, if they still have to submit a site plan, then the concerns I have are still applicable.
Which the site plan requirements, were you referring to?
It's ten thousand, ten thousand, three hundred supplemental site plan consideration. B and I three.
I, I read the, the same, the same thing that you, that you read, Mark. I mean, I, I know that there, but I don't know that it's the same when you're, they're doing a regular subdivision. You know, the, the, what they're, the conservation subdivision is, is, is an application that gives us more scrutiny over it than a regular subdivision. There's an exchange for that, which is allowing some houses to be more tightly grouped. But my question is, and maybe we'll have to figure that out between now and next meeting is, is if this application wasn't approved and they decided to go the other way, I'm not sure that we can stop it. And they'll still have houses there in front, but we won't be able to have input on it.
I, I think.
I'm not sure about that.
May I, may I say something? I, I think these are both good points. I was really delighted when I saw some of the clauses that Mark is referring to, if we were to approve the application, which is, and I think Donna can help me with this, but that as a commission, we have the power to ask for more open space, number one, okay? So if, if they were, if we were to do that, we, we could approve this application. However, the, the bottom line is, I, I suppose they could, but they're not going to physically be able to get nineteen houses there anyways because of the site difficulty. So we could say, okay, go ahead, go the regular subdivision route. But in reality, it's, it's, it's not going to be able to be done unless you have billions of dollars. The other thing is, you know, I've, I've been really thinking about this, obviously. There should be growth in zoning. There, there absolutely should be, but it's got to be sensitive and it has to be in keeping with the rural character. And that's what the P O C D tells us. And if you go, I hope you've all read it. Everybody should reread it before we make a decision on this, because it really influenced, influenced my thinking. And if you look at just the opening mission statement on the P O C D, it talks about what its purpose is, is to ensure that the town continues to accommodate growth and, and still retains the, the characters of a rural town. And one of the appendixes or whatever really has a delightful description, and it talks about the view shed that Mark is referring to. So, you know, I, I, I just keep saying it till I'm blue in the face. Why, why can't they compromise? Why can't this applicant compromise, compromise and get, get their subdivision approved with the new criteria that Mark suggested? Because unless they're trillionaires, they're not going to be able to put nineteen houses there. The land won't allow it. And I, I like the, I personally like the idea, again, of eliminating those houses to the south and keeping the meadow open. Let's not destroy our town, because our regulations say there's a possibility they could do it. That doesn't make any sense.
One of the things that you have to look at as well, and that's on page one seventy-one. It says, "The general conformity of the site plan with the intent of the town's plan of conservation and development. However, the plan of development shall not take precedent over specific provisions of the regulation."
I, I know, Donna, I read that too.
Okay, all right. I'm just pointing it out because it hasn't been, that part had not been addressed.
I, I'm aware of it. I'm aware of it. But I think we, I think we have some ability to, 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 to ask for a compromise on this. And, and didn't you tell me, Donna, that you spoke with our town attorney and the forty percent figure could be increased by the commission? Am I right on that, or was I just dreaming it?
No, you're right. It can go up, but it cannot go down. If it goes down, it's in violation of the McKenzie court. And, and the regulations stay in their interpretation and application, the provision of the regulations shall be held to be the minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of public health and safety. So, yeah, you can increase it.
Right.
You can't decrease it.
Thank you.
And my proposal didn't, didn't attempt to increase the percentage, because I'm not sure that that achieves the end that I was looking to achieve, which is opening the view to the open space. And if we simply require them to increase the amount of open space, they can do it somewhere else on the property and leave those three houses blocking the view from and over Route Seven into the open space. And I think, just Donna, you know, I didn't reference the P O C D at all in my proposal.
That's fine. Oh, this is Alice. I'd just like to add something that kept that I kept addressing. This is a brand-new regulation, which I think we are all really positive about because of the P O C D, that its attempt to encourage growth, but within the context of open space, just simple words, much more complicated. It's also the, it is the first time we have had an application for this regulation. And I think what we learn, will learn, as at least I was learning, is every application will be different. Forty percent open space in one place is seventy percent somewhere else, based on the topography and the location of the property. And so I think it's very important as we've watched this application go through and we study the view shed and then the twenty-five percent what do you call it? Altitude or what? Yeah, every, every case is going to be a little bit different, so we have to have that flexibility to increase the open space. And I think that's very key in this. And the applicant. In this, and the applicant had showed us a map. Uh a while back that circled this big oval thing that's in the center of the property. That sort of parallels the river or whatever, and it's. And I. I mean, it's open space, but it's open space. On the interior of the property. So. It's sort of. Yes, it's open space, but it doesn't address this. View shed or character of the town sort of. Thing I. So I think that. I just want to say that I think this is, we should. Congratulate the applicant and ourselves for being very careful about how we address this new restrict, this new regulation. And what we do with this one will affect others in the future. And I think the open space amount here. At forty percent is is just too small, ever how. I hear what you're saying, Mark. You're doing it more. You're opening up space because of a certain piece of the property. But maybe. They move everything down to the southern end, I guess is what what. Uh, I think the message either way is. The density of building, whether you literally can do it or not, is. Is an important characteristic of the property. And someone addressed the community house, which we haven't gotten to yet, but. That also is a big change in the density of buildings there.
In terms of open space relative to conservation subdivisions, though, it it would seem to make sense that if you had a conservation subdivision. Right on the edge of town, the open space should be at its minimum, and the further you move away from town out into the rural district. Then it would be appropriate to increase the amount of open space. And this is still V R two, it's supposed to have a New England Village pattern, so if there was ever a place to adhere to. The regulation, which a lot of thought was put into, it would be right on the very edge of existing development where there's very little open space. I I don't understand why there would be an increase in open space, the closer you get to town, right on the edge of it. From a planning standpoint, that's where you want the most density, that's where you're going to have the least amount of impact in the most pristine areas is by concentrating the development. Within an envelope that's already disturbed and developed. You you sort of lose the benefit of allowing greater density if if you minimize what can be done there. You know, the developer has already minimized it to a certain degree, it seems odd with our regulations to to further minimize it. You know, the the town character study was done in nineteen ninety, it was, you know. Revised to some degree by the town character study in two thousand thirteen, there's been multiple revisions of the P O C D. There's been quite a bit of scrutiny of the village district in recent years, and yet this parcel of land has still remained for the last thirty years. V R two. That nothing has come about to change it, it's in the same designation as an eighty unit. Condo unit. So it would seem like that the P O C D would have informed a change in the regulation by now, if if it wasn't the intent to have. Increased density here.
And I just don't think it's appropriate to generalize about um. The extent of density on a particular property. Regardless of. How close to or far away from the center of town it is, I think it's more a question of the particular property in question. And in this case. Um, this property. Has an oh currently an open view shed to the open fields. Which is very important to the people in the town. To the P O C D, um. You know, what's the point of having public hearings if we're not going to be listening to people who talk to us at them? I mean, I don't think we need to be overly influenced that by them, but. That's why we have public hearings. Um, and we've heard from. All of the members of the public who testified, or virtually all, that um the view shed to the open fields. In the sort of the northern gateway, which this is part of, is very important to the town's character. Uh, and it's a consideration we're specifically. Entitled to and required to take into consideration in granting a special permit. And approving a site plan.
I don't think you can zone by public opinion if the application fits what what we as commissioners are enforcing, which are the regulations that we've created. And the P O C D, which we've created, which the public has had input on. Um, through multiple iterations. It it's too late by the time an application. Hits the table that fits the regulations that we've created that have been informed by the P O C D, which we've. Created ourselves.
I think that gives us power for change.
Feels like we should be making that change before the application is in front of us. And the challenge here is the developers have bought something zoned V R two with the expectation they could do up to nineteen lots. They agreed to reduce it to, well, they should they agree, they proposed reducing to thirteen to take advantage of conservation and supporting open space. I'm sure from their perspective, they feel they have made a number of compromises in the shape and size of the plan. Although they haven't reduced the number of houses, I know they've certainly made efforts to try and take into account some of the public feedback. And I agree with you, from the public feedback, it's very obvious that people would prefer this remain open space. But again, if we we when we look at the primary. The primary things we're trying to preserve in terms of. Water courses and steep slopes. And taking advantage of the infrastructure, which the town has has tried to put in like a sewer system and trying to encourage density where it's not. Impacting the more rural areas. Now, if we. If we could add more and more restrictions that make it financially infusible from their perspective, it looks like. The rules are shifting under their feet. So they would either, again, come back with a non conservation oriented plan to build thirteen houses. You know, or perhaps. Question if if uh if again, if the rules are changing because of the application rather than because of the regulations that we've written to this point. They're now trying to interpret.
Um, three years ago, maybe a little more. There was a move to have a. A a a land acquisition. Committee for the town. And. And that committee was. Was shut down by. By the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee. Because the town wasn't interested in. Acquiring land. You know, this is a perfect example of a piece of land. That if the town. Wanted to preserve it, they could have. But it went up for sale and somebody purchased it. A piece of land that was always designated V R two and always the place where our town would expand to. Because after it, it's the rule, then it can expand. So you have somebody who purchased this land, knowing that it was, it had a certain zoning. And I. You know. I like. The view there, I do, it's it's the northern gateway, and we've mentioned it in the P O C D. But. Nothing's ever been done about it, now it's been purchased, and all of a sudden, now that it's been purchased and it's been for sale for a long time. Everybody's upset about it. So I'm not sure, you know, when we have an application that fits the regulations that we've provided. And it does fit it. And the applicant has done everything they can. To follow our regulations to a T. I I feel like this is something that should have been dealt with a long time ago and wasn't. And right now what we have is an applicant who's done what they were supposed to do.
They have done a good job, Adam, I would agree with that, but the flip side of it is they haven't listened. To what the town and the community feels about it. And they can still do their development. But they can compromise, they have not changed one thing since the beginning, really, they put on a little bit more. Open space in the front, and they changed the classification of the application. But they've not done anything to really. Prove to this town that, you know, they understand. How we feel about it, and okay, maybe we're up against the wall now, you know, we can't go backwards. But I don't find them being very sensitive to it. And again, I I I don't know why we have a P O C D if we're not going to pay any attention to it. And we're doing it again.
Well, as as I said from the beginning, the P O C D is a planning tool. And it's precisely the way we used it in planning in creation of the zone. That's what the 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 P O C D is conceptual. It's written in vague language, it's not specific, like our zoning is specific. It was. And and I I don't believe that this commission ignored the P O C D when it created unanimously. This uh this this overlay zone.
Well, I would just say. I don't think we're changing the rules on the developer. Yes, uh, you know, when you look at Zemanowski's letter about, you know, here's how we've complied. With the regulations. He addresses the considerations that we're supposed to take into account. But basically completely ignored. The issue of the view. That that consideration has been in the regulations all along. And it's something that we're supposed to consider. And I don't think they've. Exactly. On all fours complied with all the regulations when they ignore that issue.
I mean, I think one of the unique things about this subdivision is they didn't do the typical, which is to put up a fence and heavy shrubbery along the road. You know, I already think that the village district suffers from turning into a corridor of fences and hedges and things that seal off. Historic homes from, you know, a connection to to Main Street and the vitality of it, so. I think that this application minimizing what's being done along the road, having a a barn that speaks to the local vernacular. Having a few mature hardwoods and then having the rest of it um. Be just meadow is actually pretty progressive and and pretty responsive in terms of. Um, you know, trying to keep what's there. Um, I think that there is an opening between the southern houses and northern houses. Um, I think one of the most suburban aspects of the proposal, frankly, is the evergreen screen on the southern border, that that's what everybody does when they move to town. Plant an evergreen screen, those trees are going to grow up into the view anyway, so as you come from the north and enter town, eventually you'll see a wall of evergreens that will cut off the southwest views. Um, yet that seemed as, you know, as desirable. So um. You know, if those three southern homes were changed to affordable housing, which would be a response to public input, would would that change your mind on them?
No.
I echo that, no. They can put affordable housing on one of the other houses, some of the other houses that they have, and they haven't offered to do that, they they're. They've got.
You're saying aesthetics are more important than affordable housing in town?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that at all, I I I'm I'm pleading for. A compromise and to keep more open space, period.
And the criteria that we're entitled to evaluate, the site plan and the application. Don't include affordable housing. They could have, but they don't.
I only brought that up because that was a repeating concern of the public, and you both referenced that the application should respond to to public input.
I I think this also brings to light that we have to look at the. The whole picture, the these homes that they're building. They're not going to be in a price range. That is attractive to many people. And. You know, I think this goes along with with the thoughtful planning, I mean, it it. It just doesn't add up.
And in 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 zoning, we don't really address um uh those kind of factors.
I I realize that, but it's, I think, um, given the. Sensitivity and the gray area that we're using with P O C D that, you know. Maybe we should.
We when we reference the P O C D, it it does talk about use and preserving that aspect of of Kent. It also talks about smart development. Particularly in this exact district, so I realize we have to balance two things, I don't, we keep saying we're ignoring the P O C D. We're not, we're balancing development on the town edge with the concerns of view and aesthetics. So. We're trying to give both of them credence here. When we look at the first plan that he gave us, you know, they had four houses and it looked much denser on the on that corner. You know, their first, originally said they haven't compromised or changed, but they did go from four to three, they added the. Uh, extra spacing, uh, they agreed to change the structure of plannings and things, at the end of the day, it seems like we just don't want to see. Thirteen houses on a lot designed for nineteen, or zone for nineteen. So if we want to see ten and risklessly saying we want fifty percent less houses than we envisioned when this was planned and zoned. That this seems really tough for someone who bought the property to then digest, it feels like we'd be giving them. You know, cause to be suspicious of the of our. Thinking about how we could make that sort of conclusion. Had this regulation been much clearer. That due to the structure of the land, maybe it shouldn't be V R two, it should be zoned for something else, or maybe the district should have said, hey. You know, if you've got too much slope, maybe you need to reconsider how you're approaching the number of lots, but to just say we want fewer lots. And then supportive with just a. Single aesthetic of view just seems really challenging to support based on what's written in both the P O C D and the regulations. Donna, as a quick question, where's the final? Site plan? I was trying to figure out which one was final, and I can't remember which meeting folder it ended up in. Be great if you knew off the top of your head which one that was, I just wanted to bring it up on comparing the original one they submitted.
Um, the final site plan is dated. It's in the resolution of approval. October thirteenth, October twelfth, October thirteenth. Of twenty twenty one.
So Donna, that shows that all of the individual lots were removed.
Yes.
Yes.
Just change the classification.
Is it not in this public meeting folder?
No.
Uh, it it was, I I didn't, yeah, yeah, I'm sure sure it was.
So if you look at agenda item, it would be, um, you know, maybe it's not, let me look and see.
I'll take it there.
Not there.
I looked for it also, and I referred back to the last meeting's file.
The revised site plan is in the uh. Previous months, is in in October's folder.
Right, right. So how do people feel about um? So how do people feel about, um, uh, making a decision tonight versus the next meeting?
Well, Wes, before you go there, I have something else that I find missing.
Okay.
And I, we've brought it up often and a lot of people talked about, you know, based on history of developments, one way or the other. We have not seen an official document of the homeowners association. What they are going, who, what it does, how it operates. How do they tra-change ownership of houses? If something goes wrong, who pays for it? Um, I'm, it is, we've not, we've asked this many times, what's going to be in the homeowners association bylaws, charter? And we have seen nothing. And I don't believe we could pass on this until we know those kind of things.
Is that something that we're allowed to, or we can always ask for it? Is that something that that is a criteria that we can ask for it or?
Well, the homeowners association will be the owner of this property.
It is, it is a condition of, in point of approval. It's the declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions. Bylaws, the articles of incorporation in the rules.
And we have none of that.
Well, that's why it's a condition.
Yeah.
I believe that they had, they did talk about it at a previous meeting and they said that they could provide one, and I think it might've been the bylaws, but everything else needed to wait until they were in the process of development and selling and incorporating. That was my understanding and that's why I made it a condition of approval.
As a condition.
Should be. It should be a condition of approval.
It is. It's their number eleven.
But Donna, uh, given that it's a condition of approval, then do we have the latitude to, uh, review it when it's available? And, uh, say yay or nay to it?
Correct.
Yes.
So we can't, we can't approve, we can't approve this special permit until we see it.
No, you can approve the special permit with the conditions. A zoning permit is not issued until we get that documentation.
So the, so the condition of, of approval is that, uh, we receive the HOA regs and that they be satisfactory to us?
Yes, it would have to be.
Well, I'm asking.
That was, that was my question. Yeah.
I understand.
I mean, it sounds like we wouldn't get that until, till there are homes built and and they're selling and that's, um, or they're about to be sold. So how can
Well.
How can we accept that then? Because then there is, I mean, that
Adam, there are plenty of homeowners associations that have that document before they have anything else.
I agree. And that's what I'm saying. I, I don't, I don't know how we can approve. If that's a criteria, what's the purpose of getting it then? Because it's too late.
They can't build until they get a zoning permit. So as we know, building.
Okay.
Or if, if if one of those documents comes in after, at the end, they don't get their certificates of compliance. There's the legality of when the certain documents are submitted. That was my understanding from reading the information that I read. So that's why the condition says prior to the issues of zoning permits and/or certificates of compliance.
Okay. So they can't build without the zoning permit. They have to provide us this before the zoning permit is provided. And that's what gives us the ability to have input on the HOA. If that sounds correct.
That was my understanding that there's one portion of one, one document within this that can't be, can't be completed until a certain percentage, um, of, of the development has been sold. Cause then it gets, so then it gets turned over from the owners actually to the homeowners. And that's when the homeowners association kicks in. But there's, if there's a percentage that comes into the middle of that.
If we put conditions on this proposal, it would likely change any HOA that submitted along with the application. So they would have to continue to revise that per our conditions, correct?
Uh, I don't know. Cause I, I don't think I understand your question.
If they submitted, you know, an HOA for thirteen homes and, you know, had criteria that were specific to that, and we eliminated homes and changed things around their HOA may also want to reflect changes uh, to what was finally approved. So, you know, I certainly want to have, I have, you know, quite a few comments about how this site should be maintained, but, um, a lot of it does depend on what the ultimate approval or disapproval is.
I agree with that.
Well, I agree with that, Daryl, but the maintenance of this property is, uh, it, it sort of comes back to where we were at the beginning. It's, it's, um, you know, it's view shed, whatever you want to call it. It's the maintenance of the property is a big piece of the approval.
I mean, they submitted this HOA covenants page, which I'm assuming is part of the application, correct? It has a little more detail on it. I, I just have more specifics beyond what this would, would, uh, cover. But it seems pretty micro compared to what we're considering.
For my part, I'm not really ready to vote on this right now. There's some other research I want to do in the regs and in our basic subdivision regulations before, um, before I vote on this application.
Does anyone remember our last subdivision approval?
Before me.
So it's been a while, huh?
Long, long time ago.
All right.
Wasn't it Skiff Mountain Road? And that was a long time ago.
May or may not be super helpful or relevant to what we're looking.
Yeah, it was, it was a bear too. Well, could I suggest that, um, um, I, I think we've had some great discussions and a lot of things have been brought up. We haven't gone through the motions. The motions are out there, but I don't think we're ready to, um, go into it. We'll have, uh, we've got another thirty-five days, which we can, um, we can act on this. So, um, do I hear a motion to table it till next, until next regular meeting?
Make that motion that we table this, continue it to the next meeting.
Continue, yeah.
Also.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposition? Motion carried. So we have a lot more to talk about next, next time.
Hello? Hello?
Who is it?
This is Bianca. Sorry, I could hear you, but I couldn't respond. I do apologize for that.
Shall we untable that again?
Yeah, um, I'd need a motion to hear six B two before five B two now.
So moved.
Second.
Who's, who moved it?
Me, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. David, second?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, Bianca, you're up.
Hi, yes. Um, I just, my, my only comment to the, um, scenario was that, is it possible to have approval? Um, contingent on the signing of the lease? Is that possible? I just, our, we, we, our apprehension is that we're, we're just not sure if the change of use will go through. If we know that it's tentatively possible, we would then push to have the lease signed at a earlier time. I just, our concern is that we're just not sure if the change of use will take place. And if not, then we no longer want to pursue that location.
I, I'm only speaking for me, but I, I don't think that anybody has any problem with the change of use. Beyond changing the use before, before there's a change of use or there's even a lease.
Okay. So, um, would it, so our best approach then would be as soon as we have a fully executed lease, we would present that and then we would bring it back to, to the commission for approval?
I think so.
Yes, I think when you're ready to act on.
Okay. I just didn't want to pursue it if we weren't sure if we were going to be able to obtain the change of use. So if, if there's no objection at this time, then we'll go ahead and we'll take the next step and we'll, we'll have the lease drafted.
Does anybody have any reservations about, uh, about Kossi's Pizza taking over the location where the, where Kent Wine and Spirits is and the change of use of it from retail to, to residential. We've looked at the parking, uh, retail to, to a restaurant. We've looked at parking. You more than satisfy the parking. That's usually the big, a big one for us. So, uh, I don't know if anybody else has any reservations that, that she should know about now.
None here.
Well, then what you run into is a statutory requirement issue because site plans need to be approved in sixty-five days. And February will bypass that, I believe. So I think what we should do is have the applicant withdraw the application. Come back again when the lease is signed. I can waive the fee if it's, if it's okay with you. Um, so that they don't have to pay another, another fee on this. Um, and then we can rehear it once the lease is signed. That, that would be my recommendation.
That sounds fair to me.
Sounds good.
Agreed.
Okay.
You need a motion for that?
Well, I would need the applicant to just say that they are withdrawing. And if, Bianca, if you can send me an email to that effect, and then, um, I'll put it with the file that the application has officially been withdrawn until the signing of the lease.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your help. I greatly appreciate it.
Okey dokey. Do you want to move on to five B two? Wes, you mute, you're muted again. Wes, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, it's going to take a while. All right, let's, let's carry on.
You want to go back to five B two?
Uh, yes, that is, that's part of the public hearings.
No, no, five B two is the baseline operations and aspirations of Club Getaway.
Whoa, you know, I'm, I'm not prepared to talk about that. Is anybody else?
I don't really, I don't have anything at this point in time. Remember, we had asked David. David had said that he was comfortable, he was not comfortable coming before the commission and writing something on his own. So he did retain an attorney who ended up really not doing what David wanted him to do. So I'm going to pose the question out onto the, um, the list served. Asking any of the other towns if they have a definition of something that's similar to the way that Club Getaway um, operates. And then David and I, um, we're looking at meeting the week of like the twenty-ninth, um, maybe a little bit farther towards the end of that week so that we can talk about what information I found. And then the two of us will try to draft something and then we can talk about it at the December meeting. So I would just need, um, a motion to table.
I make a motion that we table it. Get away discussion.
Any more discussion? All in favor, so if you follow me, raise your hand. Motion passed. Okay, so we're on six A one, which is a public hearing, I believe. So should I read the public, uh, the, the notice, Donna?
Um, yeah, you, um, yes. You would read the, the public notice and then open up the public hearing.
Okay. The Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Commission shall hold a public hearing via Zoom meeting on Thursday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at seven o'clock to discuss and possibly act on changes to section of twenty-two hundred, specifically the definition of retail of the Town of Kent zoning, uh, regulations dated, uh, twenty-nine June, two thousand twenty-one. Any corresponding documentation will be attached to a legal notice, which can be found on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may participate and be heard. Please note, written communications must be received by the land use office no earlier than the twenty-fourth hours prior to the meeting. The Zoom meeting number, uh, uh, can be located on the official agenda. Signed, uh, Matt Winter, Chairman. So this is, um, simply a, a change in the definition of retail stores to, to exclude such goods, uh, as firearms, ammunition and added cannabis products as defined in, uh, in, uh, the section twenty-one dash one. Is there anyone in the public that, uh, wants to make a comment on this?
Why don't you, can you open the public hearing first?
Yes, that would be an idea.
Okay, we'll open it up at eight thirty-one.
Public hearing at eight thirty-one. And now is there anyone in the public that has anything to say on this matter?
Wes, can I first ask, just the impact of this change is simply to, um, to make, uh, anyone who wants to open a marijuana store, uh, has to submit a, a special permit application, right?
Correct. It, it's not a, a matter of right, uh, as a retail is a matter of, that it would be a special permit.
No.
Special permit.
A special.
No, that's not what it means.
I thought this, this means that they can't right now.
Exactly.
If, if you remember our discussion about this, when, when we talked about doing this right now, the, with the law change in Connecticut, everybody is unsure exactly how this is going to impact towns and, um, the smaller towns. And so in a way, to see what's going to happen and to give us the ability to to look at this and, and control it for the time being, we're adding cannabis and cannabis products along with firearms and ammunition as, as a good that is not sold in the Town of Kent. And we can change that at any time.
No, 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 no.
That's, that's not what we said when we added guns and ammo. We said by adding guns and ammo, it simply made it a special permit application.
No, that's wrong. No, no, no. You, you, there, you, there are two different definitions. There's retail stores. Then there's retail stores for guns. That's the difference. If you look at the definitions of the, um, of those two words in the book, um, under retail, you will see that that's what we had created. So basically, most towns have, I'm going to peek, I'm going to peek, you are. You are. We have retail stores, which are establishments engaged in the selling or rental of goods or merchandise manufactured by others, blah, 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 blah. Then we have retail stores, fire slash ammunition. So you have to take those, that retail store fire ammunition is the special permit. So the definition of retail stores specifically says But it shall not include firearms, ammunition, cannabis or cannabis products as defined in Public Act number twenty one dash one. So it would not be allowed, even though retail stores are allowed in the Village Center Commercial District. Most towns have put in moratoriums and those moratoriums are lasting anywhere from six months to a year. But if you forget about a moratorium in a year. Or on in the thirteenth month, someone comes in with an application to open up a pot store. In the center of town, you're obligated to actually act on that. Even though you had a moratorium. Because your moratorium has expired and now your regulations. Don't will not a it it's it would fall under the retail sales. The Public Act states that if you don't make a decision by a certain date. Then it would be considered like any other retail. Store, specifically a liquor store. So our liquor stores are not specifically identified, they are strictly retail. So based on Mike's opinion, by putting in those. Five or six words at the end of the definition of retail stores. They cannot open up at this time, but they can come in and they can opt for a change to the regulation. At which point in time, the commission will have an opportunity to better define the locations, the operation and that kind of thing to. Based on what other towns are doing. Most of the towns are doing moratoriums. A lot of the towns are not even allowing it. So to me, it was easier to do this so that. We're covered. Because. Because of my personal plans, I want to make sure that you guys are are protected after I'm gone. And this was the only way that I could think about doing it without having to sit and try to negotiate what you guys want in in the new regulation. So. You'll be covered when the um restriction hits the books and then you can figure out. At that point in time, how you want to go ahead and handle it.
Well, I've added line twenty nine for retail stores cannabis product in the special permit section.
I'm sorry, say again.
The line twenty eight is retail stores firearms and ammunition sales. We'll have to add a new definition when somebody comes in and asks for it.
Right, and then you would have to make it a use because then it would be retail stores cannabis and cannabis products.
So just this is not this is not a more this is not a moratorium.
This is not a moratorium. This is an actual change to the zoning regulations by changing the definition.
Okay.
The advice. Remember the presentation um about all of the various changes in the state of Connecticut laws? It was advised that you do something uh rather than sit back and let the state's regulation. Control it. So this is not necessarily the way we're gonna end up with it. But it's very much very important to put something otherwise you're you're just taking on what the state has said and you're losing control. Over your own community.
Right, exactly.
That's the way it was described by, I forget the man's name who uh went through all. You know, hundreds of items that the state legislature passed on.
Yeah, yeah, Mike Mike Siska's presentation.
Yeah, was it Mike? Yeah, it was, yeah.
The next thing that we're gonna do, it'll be on the next agenda, I think, or maybe January. We have to look about um opting out of a cup of one uh one new regulation that went through with this new legislation. So. But right now, all we're talking about is just cannabis and cannabis accessory products.
Does CBD count or does not count?
No, it does not count because of the um the percentage of the THC. Once it has a certain percentage of THC. Then it becomes an uh an accessory product to cannabis. And that's explained um in the public act.
So so I'm not opposed to that either. I was just under the same impression as Mark that um. By that, we we could still approve it by by special permit. That's that's all.
Right, no.
If that's not the case, it's not the case.
So we just need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept.
You can read the resolution of approval. That should have been in in the the box in the public meeting meeting folder.
I think we we uh we forestalled public comment if there is any.
Yeah.
Yes, everybody else will drive to Massachusetts.
We move to close public hearing if nobody has anything else to say.
Is there anyone from the public?
There's some people here.
They're still there, but nobody wants to comment, so. So David's closing the public hearing at eight forty.
I moved it.
Moved it.
All in favor, say aye.
I need a second for the close.
A second.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, now you can vote on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
And then I just need someone to read the resolution of approval.
I said a quick question. Is that grammar on all that kosher? It just seems.
Yeah, Mike, actually, I gave it to Mike.
Yeah, all right.
So I think this is right on uh November second, twenty twenty one, Republican American. Am I supposed to read this, the dear editor part?
No, 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 you're gonna need the res you're gonna need to read the resolution of approval. That was the public record. That was the public notice.
I don't see it. Oh, I see. Resolution to change.
Yes.
Okay.
Should start resolved.
Yep, resolve. That the Kent Planning and Zoning Commission make the following changes to section twenty two hundred of the town of Kent Planning and Zoning. Regulations dated June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, changes to section twenty two hundred definition of retail stores. Existing twenty two hundred definition retail stores. Establishments engaged in the selling of rental of goods or merchandise. Manufactured by others usually to the general public for personal use or household consumption, although they may. Also serve businesses or institutional clients and in rendering services into incidental to the sale of such goods. Such goods shall not include firearms or ammunition. Proposed twenty two hundred definitions retail stores. Establishments engaged in the selling or rental of goods or merchandise manufactured by others usually to the general public. For personal use or household consumption, although they may also serve business or institutional clients. And in rendering services. Incidental to the sale of such goods, such goods shall not include firearms, ammunition, cannabis or cannabis products as defined. In Public Act number twenty one dash one, June special edition. In adopting the above, the commission states on its record that the commission's judgment, the that in the commission's judgment. The proposed amendment satisfies the factors. The commission must consider in reviewing such amendments as set forth in the Plan of Conservation and Development. And the zoning regulations of the town of Kent, adopted by the Kent Planning and Zoning Commission this. December seventh, twenty twenty one.
You're a second.
Thanks, Mark.
Any further discussion on the matter? I call a vote. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion, Carrie. Okay, um. So moving on, six B three. Uh requested by the Board of Selectmen for recommendation by Planning and Zoning Commission to update land use regulations with respect. To vending of food via truck or any other means. I don't think we have anything on this and I I would suggest that we table this.
Are you suggesting that we table it because we don't have anything or we are denying they are denying their request?
No, no, we're not denying their request. Donna, we we said we don't have the information, right?
No, I mean, we had given this to the selectmen a couple of years ago. Um they they didn't, they never acted on it. And then in October of this year, it finally came forward again. I don't know, I I personally, I think our agenda is too long at this point in time to talk about something that we had talked about forever. Um and at the it we just, I don't feel that we have the time to discuss this right now. That's basically what it is.
I don't I don't, Donna, I don't think it's requiring us to talk about it now. It's requiring us to respond to their requests that we. Talk about this at some point.
Right.
We don't have to do it right this minute.
Nope.
Well, I was. We had we had thrown it to the selectmen to make the decision. They seem to be putting it back to us. So. All we have to do is say yes or no right now.
So we'll just, you know, I mean, yeah, I was it was I was asked to put it on the agenda. It's on the agenda. With everything else that you guys are discussing, I think this, especially with it being so cold. They're not going to be coming here anyway. Um we can discuss it at another point, so we can table it to the next meeting.
Move the retable it.
Thank you, Mark.
For a second. Adam seconds. Of. All in favor? If I by raising your hand. Any opposition? We'll hear it. Okay. Uh one one opposed, we'll we'll hear this next next month, right, Donna?
I'll I'll leave it on the agenda until you guys are ready to discuss it.
Okay. So six B four. Appointment of replacement of Matt Winter. To P O C D subcommittee in affordable housing.
Uh what what else can I say? Um based on Matt's email. I I thought it was my my prerogative to uh suggest a replacement to the committee and. I asked David uh if he was willing to serve and he is, so that would be my suggestion.
In which in which committee? There's two different committees.
Well, it's on the P O C D committee.
I'm already on affordable housing, so somebody else will have to take that slot. I'm I will be happy to serve under the P O C D committee.
Okay, so you have Mark nominating David. Do you have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Wes.
All in favor? Okay, David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then for the um affordable housing plan subcommittee. I don't, David, do you think that that Jocelyn can do with just one? I mean, when when the the initial request came out, it was one or two.
I mean, I missed the first meeting, so I had a a prior commitment, but I think based on what I saw at the last meeting, I can probably manage. I can certainly bring anything, maybe more than Mary or if somebody really wants to help, it doesn't seem like it would be too onerous.
Yeah, I mean, if you think that you're being stretched too much and you want to come back at a later time and ask for someone to jump in. The meetings are Zoom, so they're recorded, right?
Yeah, they're recorded and I think the first three or four meetings are mostly gonna have been. Uh well, the the plan is mostly research and gathering. There'll be another survey. Uh I will try to bring things back here where it looks like we won't want to dovetail P O C D type stuff with affordable housing and stuff. If somebody's really dying to to uh. Way in on this, you know, the kind of state of the plan, I would certainly encourage them to attend, but I think I can probably handle it.
I'm on the P O C D subcommittee. I I don't want to be on another one. Good for you, David.
You're welcome. Paying my dues.
Good, next. So Donna, this six B five. Do you want to talk about that?
So basically, um while I was away on vacation, I got an email from a developer who said. I have a client that owns property on Cobble Road. I've got a crew that can go in there and clear cut about an acre of land um as he prepares to um possibly build a house. So I I just said to him, look, I need to look at the map. I need to see if it's in the horizon line. There's a very small portion in the horizon line. Now, at one point in time, it has been said that if anything is being built. On a piece of property that's within the horizon line, it needs to come before the commission. But then if you read the regulations, there are there's a little bit of leeway in that. So I said to the to the developer, look, according to the map that I have, you're in the horizon line, so. I need to know more information. Um and I said, nobody has ever come to me. To clear cut land. Without having any permits in place. Now granted, the property is not small. I it's, you know, I think it's almost eight acres of land. But it's still. According to the engineer, it would be, it's gonna be close to an acre of land. Outside of the horizon line, but. I, you know, for the life of me, I don't feel comfortable making a decision to let someone go in, cut an acre. When there's no applications and there's actually nothing in front of Kathy Weber at this point in time either. I mean, I have because of all of the sales that have been happening at this point in time up at St. John's Peak. I'm getting calls from people all the time. Can I put in, you know, just a kind of a farm driveway? Can I put in a driveway? We need to do our perk tests. I'm working with Kathy Weber and I allow them to do that. But this is nothing. I have nothing. From this person other than what you see in the public meeting folder and. I spoke to the developer today and I said, honestly, I am not comfortable. Allowing this. It's never happened to me before. And. I I just said I I'm gonna refer to the commission and see what the commission thinks and 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 just take my lead from you guys.
I don't think this is in applications, but with what's been provided. I would never. Go along with this. It what they've these two little things that they've given us are. Are so insufficient for us to make a decision on anything.
Karen, you're muted.
You're you're doing a good job, Donna, because when I first got this in the file, I was like, where's the site application form? Where is the survey? And and also just FYI, it's five acres, not eight.
Okay.
And it's not that that's your problem, but and it's surrounded or it's across from all this gorgeous land trust. This would be like a pimple on. A face or something, but anyways, we don't have enough information.
Daryl.
If this didn't have a portion of the property in the Horizon Line Conservation District. Would they be able to go in there and clear an acre as of right?
I looked and I could not find that in the regulations. The regulations are kind of mute. They talk about you have the right to go on your property and move. Move soil, as long as you don't remove it, you can create agricultural lands. Now, does that mean that if you're gonna create agricultural lands, you have the right to cut down trees? It's not specific enough for me. I it wasn't specific enough for me to make a decision, so. I just I'm just looking for some guidance.
So there's something in our regulations about clear cutting.
So so what I saw in the application, they gave too much information. I saw a site plan that was totally graded out. And and I would be extremely worried about this application.
Thank you. Okay, I thought maybe it was just me being too sensitive. Um and I I like I said, I I. They haven't even started the process of talking to Kathy. I talked to Kathy on Tuesday and she said no one has contacted her at all. I talked to Kathy on Tuesday and she said, no one has contacted her at all. So. I, 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 I just am referring it to you.
I mean, here's an example where just having a little bit in the horizon line zone is allowing for this extra perusal of the application in sight. Generally, if there's a portion of the property in there, there's, there's steep slopes involved. I would say that, you know, they are proposing their development to be at the lowest point of the property. So they're avoiding the horizon line conservation district, but we sort of run into an issue that we were talking about earlier. To be the most environmentally sound, they should put the house near the road. Their driveway is going with the contours. Most of their grading is going with the contours. But that's going to be the most visible location to people on Cobble Road. So do you want to see it or do you want it built in the most environmentally sound way?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Muted.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I don't even think we should be talking about it until we have a complete package period.
At least the site plan. Brilliant.
I agree. What, what they've given us is, we don't even need to discuss this. We should just go on. This is not, this is so insufficient, it's unacceptable.
So you want me to ask them to provide us with more information and an application to go ahead and cut the trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a side note, is this highlight a hole in the regs?
It might be.
Like, I'm not in the horizon district. Can I just mow down twelve acres of trees and nobody could do anything?
Well, if you remember, they did that on the top of Treasure Hill. I mean, and they, they opened up a view shed for themselves. That was fantastic. But for some reason, do you remember that piece of mill steam piece of property?
Oh, I remembered. I see it every day.
Exactly. If you're on the other side. Holy macro, you know, it's beautiful. Don't get me wrong. But it was, I think, even more beautiful when it was packed full of, of, of a forest. But but there wasn't anything that we could do about it because they weren't in the horizon line. But at least there was a house there. This is an empty lot. And I don't even know if he has, like, how many trees is he going to be cutting down? The size of those trees, whether or not it would be considered a forestry application because forestry starts to kick in after it hits a certain lineage. And so I. But he didn't really want to listen to me, and I said, you know what, I referred to the commission and they'll make the decision. So I'm going to ask for additional information such as a better site plan, how many trees are coming down? The size of those trees, if anything's over twenty four inches at breast height. Sound feasible?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay.
All right, moving on, staff report, there's nothing. I guess the P O C D subcommittee is. Is, is reformulated.
Yeah.
Probably nothing there.
So, no, we were going to have a meeting on the sixteenth, but with all of the changes, Glenn and I decided. That rather than have him rush to get the booklets together, we're going to move, we moved it to December second. And he'll have all the booklets together, and then we can, at the December meeting, the P O C D subcommittee can give an update.
Okay, great. Any comments on administrative permits? Looks like it's a little more active.
Yeah.
Do you have to get an administrative permit to redo a septic system?
No. Unless you're close to the wetlands, then I, then I don't. I don't get involved unless there's a possibility that you could be impacting a wetlands. But Kathy wouldn't let you put a septic in the wetlands anyway.
Yeah.
So Donna, here's one that Matt kind of handled, this annual report. Rich.
Yeah. He kept asking me to keep it on the agenda because he didn't have an opportunity to read the actual report.
Yeah.
Um, but we made a couple of changes to the, the reporting requirements. On because it was costing them a fortune to have all these testing done and everything was testing out clear. So they changed the type of testing, but they're still testing once a year. They're just not doing the same tests. So, and I think from reading the special permit, they have to maintain a certain number of testing sites in order to maintain their audubon status. So it's just an FYI. If no one's interested, I can take it off the agenda for next month.
It takes a real clear head to, to keep up with this.
Yeah, I can't understand it.
That was a long time ago, Bull's Bridge.
Yeah. And that's just a small portion of the book that comes in. Because it comes in, in a book, so.
Terrific.
Take it off or keep it on?
I'd say take it off.
Okay. Okay.
So anything to talk about on the monthly financials?
Nope. We are above our budget as far as income is concerned, based on the number of permits that we're doing. And I have money that's going to be turned back, so I think we're doing good.
Terrific. The, the quarterly newsletter, Donna, anything in particular there?
Um, you know what, I always find some really good tidbits of information in this. So if you have some time just to scan through them. Um, it's, it's really, it's very, very helpful. And, and the thing that I like about Steve Byrne is, is that everything is really written in layman's terms that I can understand.
And that was interesting on the appeal that was granted.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a good little newsletter.
And I suppose no one has any issue with the calendar for next year? So I guess we need to approve that.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Moved second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Um, can I add a quick note of a question? I'm pretty sure there's no October one hundred and twenty third, so maybe we could.
Okay, well, I figured you could choose either the, either the twelfth or the twenty third. Well, okay.
So. Is it the twelfth, I assume?
It's the twelfth, yeah.
Twelve, okay.
Approved with change, okay.
All right, so finally, there was an email from Journey Judy Perkins, which I guess corrected a letter that she had written to the commission. Or clarified a letter that she had written to the commission. So I guess we've so noted that in our, in our documentation.
So it's, it's, you know, it's part of the record. It's officially a part of the record, but. You know, when I had talked to Mike at one point in time, and he had said that anytime you have a public hearing. And you're receiving information during the, the open public portion of the application, then any documentation. Becomes. Recordable. But once that public hearing closes. Then it, the, the doc, the written documentation just strictly becomes. On written documentation for the commission to just accept. And they don't necessarily have to act on it.
Yeah, I thought she was asking us to amend the minutes.
She basically is, but she's not, she's not allowed to do that. So.
And we already approved them, so.
You know, I mean, it's just, it, it's just her recommendations. It's, you know, it's, it's a portion of interpretation. And so we're just accepting this document as written communication to the commission.
Yep, fine.
On ten and eleven, I don't have any reason to go into executive session at this point in time for either of them. So I would just need a motion for twelve and thirteen. Copy the, the wording from the previous month.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Donna, you're on. So, wow, thank you all for your patience. It's, it's awful big shoes to fill.
It is. You're doing great.
Yeah, I miss Matt. Yeah.
Two hours like that.
Is he listening to us, Matt?
Only if he changed his name.
Yeah, no, I think he'll, he said he was going to watch it tomorrow. So. All right, so I guess I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
All right, no, no hesitation there. Hey, thanks, you guys. We'll, we'll see you next month.
Good night, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Seth.